It's nine o'clock. I call this meeting the Upstate County Commission to order. Before we start here, I'd like to welcome Sam Mowley, our new commissioner. Welcome to the commission. I look forward to working with you, Sam.
Thank you for the call, his board of working with you and both of the citizens of Upstate County. I'm excited.
But do you hear anything you want to say?
I'm glad to have you here. I know it's a great thing.
Nobody follow what I'm saying.
Okay. We'll have a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance and then approval when we manage from December 22nd, 2016 and December 28th, 2016 special meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, no doubt, in the little little district of Texas.
Good morning and happy new year.
Happy new year.
The county commission of Upstate County, West Virginia held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, December 22, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. Terry Cotright called the meeting to order present where Terry Cotright Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Kerry Wallace County Administrator, Tabitha Perry Assistant County Administrator, Jack Longton Office Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of December 15, 2016, House submitted. The commission reviewed a December 16, 2016 proclamation by Governor Earl Ray Tomlin regarding closure of business on the afternoon of Friday of December 23, 2016 as a legal holiday and permits county commissions throughout the state to exclude county employees from their work duties without charge against their approved annual leave. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the holiday status for the afternoon of December 23, 2016 and closure of the Upstate County courthouse annex and county facilities with essential employees compensation as other legal holidays. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved a request from Ken Liu, Chief Real Estate Office, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Pittsburgh District to receive spatial data for parcel mapping including owner's names. Kerry Wallace provided a review of her request from the City of Buchanan concerning the Upstate County Regional Airport, Waterline and Pump Station as discussed at the December 8, 2016 meeting of the City of Buchanan Water Board. Mayor McCully has requested a donation of 50% of the cost of the repairs to the waterline and pump station which Chapman Technical Engineers have estimated to be around $7,500. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission agreed not to take action at this time on the mayor's request due to budget shortfalls. Commissioners stressed that this is a standalone decision which is due to the current and near future financial situation and is not to be viewed as, quote, "a sign of future cooperation", unquote, with the city. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the reappointment of Lori Olver Chardy as a board member of the James Curry Library Board. Ms. Olver Chardy's term will expire on December 31, 2021. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the signing of correspondence to Larry Coger expressing appreciation for bringing into compliance state structures and sites ordinance support for the board case number 071113x01. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of Donald Price as Upstate County Assessor effective December 21, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the request from James Farrell Office of Emergency Management Director to take a temporarily unpaid leave of absence effective December 15, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved Ken Bryan Reed as interim Office of Emergency Management Director during the length of Mr. Farrell's absence. Mr. Sherris will temporarily increase his working hours to no more than $25 per week at his current rate of pay. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of part-time maintenance employee Michael Dean effective December 24, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the resignation of Beth Burkhart, County Child Exchange and Visitation Program Coordinator. The commission congratulates Ms. Burkhart for election to the position of Lewis County Circuit Clerk. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of Judith Piercy as Tri-County Child Exchange and Visitation Program Site Supervisor effective December 14, 2016. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Shannon Here and Michelle Fie as Tri-County Child Exchange and Visitation Program Monitor effective December 23, 2016 at the rate of $8.75 per hour for no more than 19 hours per week. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the change of employment status of Chelsea Watson from Tri-County Child Exchange and Visitation Program Monitor to Site Supervisor as requested by Beth Burkhart, Program Coordinator. Ms. Watson will work no more than 19 hours per week at the hourly rate of $9.50 and will be read Farrell Act here to December 11, 2016. Kerry Cotright reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, correspondence from Governor Earl Ray Tomlin announcing the application to the Small Cities Block Grant Program through the Outlets Row Public Service District. Phase three water system improvement project has been approved in the amount of $1,500,500. Kerry Wallace advised that the Region Seventh Planning Development Council will manage this grant. Number two, 2017 standard mileage rates for business, medical and moving announced December 13, 2016. Pre-administrative order, Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia, 2016 holiday time off for Florida employees. Four, United States of America Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Notice of Schedule for Environmental Review of the West Virginia Express Project. Five, correspondence from Melissa Garrison, executive director of the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Program approving the previously filed request for extension for the root repair project. The new grant deadline is now January 21, 2016. Six, newsletters and or event notifications as listed. Seven, eight, a check of the same notice meetings as listed. Eight, meetings as listed. Nine, meetings as listed. Ten, appointments made before upcoming cash listed and there are two listed. The Upstate County Civil Service Board. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the reappointment of Gans Willett as a board member. Mr. Willett's term will expire by 12:31, 2020. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved application orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission reviewed agenda items for future meetings, received project updates and discussed administrative business items. With no further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission meeting adjourned and left for Friday, December 28, 2016. The county commission of Upstate County, West Virginia held a special meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, December 28, 2016 at 8:00 a.m. Kerry Cotright called meeting to order present where Terry Cotright Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Kerry Wallace County Administrator, Tabitha Perry Assistant County Administrator, Jack Longton Office Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by a pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. For great sadness, Kerry Cotright announced a vacant position for the unexpired term of the Upstate County Clerk due to the recent passing of Debbie Becker-Woome. For West Virginia election code 3-10-7, the commission will be appointing a temporary successor for a period of not more than 30 days. Within a 30-day period, a permanent successor will be appointed and will serve until the next general election in November of 2018. Kerry Wallace provided a review of candidates for a position. Letters of interest were received from Carl Robbie Martin, Dr. Sproppers and Carol J. Smith. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the appointment of Carol Smith as temporary successor to the office of the Upstate County Clerk for not more than 30 days. Commissioners cited Miss Smith's 18 years of experience as deputy county clerk and her extensive knowledge as assets for the position. The commission will discuss the permanent appointment in the new year. With no further business on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission adjourned at 8:00 a.m.
You heard the reading of the minutes of December 22, 2016 and December 28, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections? Now are there any motions approved?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
A vote of no. Eyes have. We have items for discussion, action and approval. Item one, election of commission president for 2017 calendar year.
I'll make a motion that we elect Kerry Cotright as president.
I need to ask one question before I do that. Sam, are you an elected and resident president of the county commission because if you are, I would vote for you right now. If not, I will second your motion, Kerry Cotright, outside of the room. But with that being said, I think you've done an outstanding job. You've planned a lot to this table. You've been president on every board in this county for years. I have no problem right now nominating you for president of this county commission. I think you've planned a lot to the table because Terry and I are about 27 years old. We're old fashioned. We're missing some of the new technology and stuff and I don't like change. With that, change is good for the county. I have no problem nominating you right now for president if you want, because I think you've planned a lot to this table. I've known you for years and I appreciate our friendship over the years. So, it's up to you.
I appreciate it.
I do not want. I think you've done an outstanding job.
Yeah, I didn't even work really interested. That's why. I'll tell you about, I think I should probably get myself a year to get my feet wet and kind of get wrap my head around everything. I appreciate it, buddy. Maybe next year.
What's going to be second?
With that being said, Sam, if you don't want it, I don't want it, I'll say it.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
A vote of no. Eyes have. Thank you. Item two, oath of office of commission president. Mr. Carroll. I'll bring it up here again.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of
President of the Upstate County Commission.
President of the Upstate County Commission.
To the best of my skill and judgments that help me out.
To the best of my skills and judgments that help me out. Thank you, Carol.
You would just like to enter.
Okay. I have three steps. Have you established date and time for regular commission meetings? I'm not sure you got to read that. Do I have a motion to approve?
No, I'm sorry. That's approval of local rules for commission meetings is page one. They establish date and time for regular commission meetings. You have to establish that a regular date and time you're going to have your meetings. Right now, you have your meetings weekly on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. You're not able to have your meetings on Wednesday because the family court will occupy this space.
So, that doesn't make it pretty business.
It does. You need to decide what day and what time you're going to have meetings.
I would need you to move to four before we do three. Is that what you're saying?
No.
You're on three right now.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we have our weekly meetings on Thursday at 9:00 a.m. unless otherwise stated.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Oath of no. Eyes have. Thank you. Four, approval of local rules for commission meetings. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
A vote of no. Eyes have. Six, discuss agenda and format and material conclusion contents. You want to do that first? What's that? Oh, signing sheet, yeah. I'm going to cut down. Approval of signature signing sheets. Approval of registration signing sheets in accordance with West Virginia Code 6-9-8-3. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
A vote of no. Eyes have. So, item six, discuss agenda, format and material conclusion contents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Well, we wanted to discuss this. So, obviously, this is your agenda right now. If you were wanting to change, we think that would be the time. You have the discussion action approval section and the for your information section. The for your information section, we've been including newsletters and or event notifications. We've kind of separated that out. You can decide whether or not you want to include those items. General mail that you receive doesn't have to go on the agenda unless you would like it to. We've been including it as a for your information.
Is it necessary?
You're not required by the Open Meetings Act. You can decide what you want to include in your agenda and what you don't want to include. And looking at other counties' agenda packets, they don't include as much for your information items as we do. It's not a problem to continue doing that, but if you're going to change it, the first meeting of January would be the time.
I don't see, we operate the last two years without being there.
I think if all stuff included in it, if that way it looks at it.
So, you're saying you don't think we need to include that in the agenda?
I don't think we need to include all that because I'm, from the wise time we picked up that and made everything do with that, you know what I mean? You leak it, and that's us as commissioners. I mean, as far as making package for the average public out here, I'll see them picking up and looking for it. However, I have no problem one way or another to save the county's
Situation paper.
And paper and stuff like that. And I think next year is going to be a little tougher and I think we need to watch where we're spending our money because I'm sure we're going to need to.
So, what would you like to add?
We need a for your information.
For your information, we have items there that sometimes you have to act upon. A couple of different places that we could hopefully cut out would be newsletters and or event notifications. That's something that other counties normally do not include in their agenda packets. Sometimes you have general mail that's included in your agenda that other counties do not include.
Well, I'd say don't include anything. We don't need to, or we're not required to.
Well, but then you end up with a problem. What do you really need, you know what I mean? So, I think if there's an event notification, I don't know whether we need to do that, but I think somebody with three county commissions, no, if it looks ill or anything can or something going on, I think the county commissioners will bring that up to channel three if they're here, but then as far as putting in the packet, don't see anything in that. Things that are important should be included in the packet, you know what I mean? Letters and stuff.
Because it's hard to mean in a cycle what's important to you compared to what's important to me. Would you be okay without just leaving it then?
I would.
Because making contact would be for every event that you might be entrust in. It's going to be easier for us to include it in the agenda than you can want.
Yeah, I was going to ask, like, how much is really?
It depends on what.
Right. I get through packets every week, but I say we just leave it because it is going to be tough to decipher sometimes what is important.
You don't need approval, do you? You do?
Yeah.
Really, you make a motion and say?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we continue to do it as we have in the past couple of years and we think it's the same.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All papers shaking above saying aye.
Aye.
Vote for no.
Eyes have.
Seven, establish hours of operation for the Upstate County courthouse annex and administrative annex. That's on page three.
Regular hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. before 30:00 p.m. Monday through Friday.
Okay, I say we stay with that.
I'll make a motion to stay with the same hours we've been operating on. I'll second that.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. Eight, approval of 2017 holiday schedule and administrative closure. That's on page three.
These mere the governor's holidays with exception of your hours of operation for May 19th and December 22nd, you're closing well. It's proposed for you to close
That, be sure of the festival and, and Christmas.
The Friday before Christmas.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye. Vote for no. Eyes have. Item number nine, approval of the Upstate County Shield. This is to go on our letters and letterhead and stuff. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. Item 10, affidavit of commission president, sheriff and county clerk established in St. Face and Neil City. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. So, approval. Consider commission of board, board appointments. You guys don't have a list of the board appointments. You want to make any changes or you are the board the way we've come, so.
I'm good with it. Good with it. Thank Commissioner Brady for taking on five public boards.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. So. Approval, item 12, approval of press release regarding the commission's relocation to 91 West Clane Street, Suite 101, Buchanan. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. 13, approval of board review and equalization 2017 schedule. Do I have a review of that? Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. Item 14, approval of board review and equalization publication notice to the Upstate County Commission was set as the board review and equalization begin at 1:00 p.m. on the first day of February 2017 and shall continue until the work is complete, but will adjourn no later than close of business on the 16th day of February 2017. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no.
Eyes have.
Item 15, approval and signature correspondence to the Upstate County Assessor and Property Tax Division of the State Tax Department giving authorization to correct valuations for real property, personal property and/or mineral accounts. Any adjustments made after February 1st, 2017 must be forwarded to the commission setting as a board review and equalization. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved, been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. Item 16, approval and signature of Valley Business Systems Service Contact for a machine located at the James W. Perry Library. Annual charge would be $474 and the terms of service would be effective December 1st, 2016 through November 30th, 2017. Coverage includes parts, labor, mileage, inspection and consumable supplies not excluded. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Eyes have. Item 17, approval and signature of correspondence to Charlie Heeder regarding a complaint filed with the Upstate County Safety Structure and Sites Board in regards to property located in Banks Tax District, tax map 22, partial number 46, in April of 2012. This letter serves as a written warning requesting that Mr. Heeder take corrective actions in order to bring the property into compliance with the safety structure and sites ordinance. This letter, because the property was sold from the original, we received a letter and of course, they spend on a letter to the person who bought the property.
That's correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still move. Second.
Been moved second on paper, shaking of the second eye.
Aye.
Vote for no. Those who know, ayes have. Item eighteen, approval of recommendation for waiver of bond in the estate of Anna Belle Hamner. The amount of funds to be received in deminence less than one thousand dollars relative to the annual cost of the security bond regarding, or required of each guardian. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved second on favor, shake your body, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, ayes have. Item nineteen, discussion regarding the appointment of a permanent successor to the office, office of the county clerk due to certification of the November two thousand eighteen general election. Discussion may lead to, and point. Item may lead to executive session for West Virginia Code six dash nine eight dash four. Is anyone ready? I wanna move into executive session.
I would, I'd move if we move into executive session.
I don't see the name, but if you feel like we should, I'll save it back. We'll go into executive session.
Okay. Been moved second, we move into executive session on favor, shake your body, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, ayes have. So we're now exiting executive session, no decision, we're leaving executive session. I will say this, it is not necessary, according to West Virginia State Code, that we advertise the position. We can go right ahead and appoint if we have somebody in line, we can appoint him today. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we go ahead today and appoint the best we have, Carol Smith to fill the term.
I will second that, Carol, that you have done a terrific job in the county. You've been here and you, you know the office very well, and I think you've done a terrific job.
It's been moved second, do I, on favor, shake your body, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, ayes have. So.
Carol?
May I play?
May I play?
May I play?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Item twenty, approval of advertising for temporary groundskeeper slash maintenance position for the two thousand seventeen spring summer, beginning in mid-March and going through late September. The rate of pay is nine dollars per hour with no benefits provided for the position. Applications must be received on or before the close of business on Friday, February tenth, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved second on favor, shake your body, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, ayes have. Item twenty-one, correspondence from James T. Farrell announcing his resignation from the Upshur County Safe Structure and Sites Enforcement Board. This is a general public position with the term set to expire on June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Do we need to move on back here? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved second on favor, shake your body, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, ayes have.
That is a community number appointment. If anyone's interested, we'll have to wait until the next week.
Okay. I mean, folks are on that board. Six, seven.
Five.
Six, if you found the sheriff's exact official.
Okay, item twenty-two. I'll have, that's the end of wishes. For your information items, item one, correspondence from Jim Jeb, Amberky, Chairman and Property Valuation Training and Procedures Commission's data in West Virginia Department of Revenue Tax, State Tax Department, regarding the assessor's proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen valuation fund budget. Written evidence showing that a lesser amount than the amount requested by the assessor would be adequate must be submitted to the Property Tax Division on or before January fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. Do we need a motion on that? Item two, EQT mainstream partners LP natural gas pipeline safety brochure. Item three, correspondence from Robert C. Orndorff, State Policy Director of West Virginia and Local Affairs Dominion, asking public officials to partner with Dominion in a safety initiative about promoting safety digging throughout our community. Is that required, motion?
Not unless you have some sort of idea.
Item four, Upshur County building permits December twenty-sixteen. Item five, Upshur County Sheriff's financial statement for period ending November two thousand sixteen. Item six, Upshur County D nine one communications report November twenty sixteen. Item seven, newsletters and or events notices. Item eight, agendas and or letters for meetings. Item nine, minute meetings, or ten meetings. Appointments needed are upcoming, is item eleven. And tabled items, no tabled items. Next regular meeting of Upshur County Commission, January twelfth, two thousand seventeen, nine eight AM, Upshur County Courthouse Annex.
Commissioner Howey, could you note that we have our offices, or those that don't?
Yeah, that would be fine. We never moved our offices. We moved yesterday and the day before. It'll be at ninety-one West Main Street, Suite one oh one. I'd like to thank the administrator and assistant administrator, who means cordial with this move and acceptance, so we saved the county quite a bit of money.
I'd like to thank the maintenance department for the outstanding job they did doing the office down there. When you go down there, you will see that we do have nice offices down there, located in a good spot here out in the middle. And we certainly do want to thank county administrator and assistant county administrator for making, willing to make the move, because this county did not have the money to look for efficient property and do anything other than we did, and I appreciate them making the move, but I think they'll like it.
Reach out to the chamber and schedule a revending.
Yeah, thank you too. That is probably several hundred thousand dollar savings.
That's amazing, though.
Thank you. The name is part of the bureau department as well. They did do a terrific job on the revenue inside.
You got any bills?
You all hit, Mr. Campbell.
Hold on, Terry, I'm sorry. Will county commission meeting, re-meeting here or at ninety-one, West Main Street?
Re-meeting here every Thursday.
Okay.
Now, we, now, since it is an annex of the, we made an annex of the courthouse so we can have our budget hearings and stuff with the department heads at ninety-one.
The board review and equalization.
Yeah, you kept talking about offices being moved over there, and I didn't know if you was gonna have a meeting room there for the commission or not.
We have a conference room for, like Carrie says, the board mobilization review and, and budget hearings and stuff like that. But the meetings, the commission's meetings will still be held here every Thursday.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The boards that formally met in this room in the evening will be at ninety-one West Main Street, also. The fire board, Marley Protection, Marks and Ratt.
I did bring a letter from our car club and gave it to Carrie. There is one in there for each one of you all pertaining to possibility of opening Main Street back up to blast from the fad, which is conducted in July. I appreciate it. You'll read, read that and give Carrie the okay to send the letter to the public works.
I promise you it's low range.